The Monday, May 5th, 2014 meeting and public hearing of City Falls Church Planning Commission is now in session. We're sorry we're so late. Thank you for your patience in waiting for us to be called to order. Ms. G., would you please call the roll?
Mr. John?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Rankin? Okay, sorry. I'd like to dispense with the adoption of the agenda because I think our agenda will be rather fluid. So, because we're waiting for some information to come from discussions in the back, so we'll -- if someone would give me a motion to dispense with the adoption of the agenda, I would appreciate it.
I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to dispense with the adoption of the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. We'll move on to receipt of petitions. This is for the audience. If anyone in the audience has petition to the Planning Commission for anything other than what is on the agenda, now is the time to do it. Come up and speak at the microphone, give your name and address, and we will hear your petition. We'll move on to new business. We have no new business. Other business, we have no other business. So, we're going to move on to Planning Commission reports. Yes, does anyone have any Planning Commission report?
Yes. Yes, I have a Planning Commission report. So, on Wednesday, May 7th, a red letter day, make a note of it, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board is having their meeting, not in the usual place, at the community center, but at Roberts Park. And they are discussing the hopeful and future acquisition of a piece of property that immediately abuts Roberts Park, which has been 14 years in coming and was a critical piece of the open space report in 2004. So, make a note, Wednesday, May 7th, to attend the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board's meeting. I'm shocked that there is any question. This was on our agenda for us to approve or to support, and it was pulled at the last minute, which is unfortunate. I would be shocked, shocked, that anyone on the city council would be not in favor of this outstanding idea to purchase this additional land for open space. Certainly, I had the opportunity to ask every single member of city council in the last two election cycles if they were a supporter of open space, and I would note that every single one of them was a supporter, and here's an opportunity to do something to further that end. So, May 7th, Roberts Park, 7:00.
What time? 7:00.
Forgot my calendar.
Are you saying that this was on our agenda for tonight and it was pulled?
Yes, I'm saying it was on our agenda for tonight and it was pulled.
Well, I think that's so that we could attend the meeting and be more informed, the May 7th meeting, and be more informed on this for the next time we had it on our agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commission reports?
Yes, I have some information from the Housing Commission, or Housing, yeah, Housing Commission, about the Miller House. You know, I've been liaison with, to that group to look at the Miller House, to, it's property that the city owns. We own the land and the house. The house is not usable at all. But we've been investigating, along with a number of interested parties, mainly a lot of faith groups, to put, to build a small group home for people with disabilities. And at this point, they're ready to put out an RFP, so I just gave you the information. It'd be approximately three stories high, and there's all kinds of information back here. But it's just an RFP to see who would be interested in working with us on it.
Thank you, Ms. Hockenberry.
You going to speak about North Gate?
No, I'm not. You go ahead.
At some point, Miller House may be coming to the Planning Commission after it goes through this process.
Oh, actually, I would like to say something about --
Yeah, please.
Okay. Any reports on this side of the fence? Okay, I went to the ribbon cutting of the North Gate property, and very nice, we got a great tour of the premises, and it really turned out to be quite an impressive project. My big takeaway from that was all the compliments the planning department and staff got from the developers as to how much they helped everyone and how they helped the process move and how cooperative the city was towards their project. So, I don't want to hear any more complaints about how we hold up developers. I know that they had a sympathetic audience to those particular comments, but I thought it was very nice of them to really emphasize it. Each of the speakers from the developers said the same thing, and I think that the planning staff should take heart. Not everyone is complaining.
That's the project that was started in 2005.
Thank you for passing those compliments on. I unfortunately got there a little late and didn't hear the initial things. Did get a chance to see the tour and talk to folks. I would say our building safety staff, through a tough winter, did a lot of effort to try to clear floors and get, in a very orderly fashion, all the inspections done, so, and work with the contractors, also pointing out deficiencies so they could get fixed, wouldn't hold things up. And I understand they are doing very well, and they're leasing up, and the housing office has been able to place quite a few people in the affordable units, and the retailers are coming in. So, it's, there's still a few things, I mean, there's some ADA tweaks to the paver sidewalks that were being done on Saturday. So, they're going through their punch list, but all in all, I thought it was a very handsome building, very nice interiors, relates very well to the adjacent neighborhood, and the solar orientation where we actually had a sunny day was evident that it's correctly done, because you had very nice daylight in the courtyards that face the neighborhood.
May I also add that it has a great parking garage.
It does have a great parking garage.
It's one of the most accessible ones around with the middle entrance and going in very wide aisles going down into the parking garage, and it really is quite, just really good. Very easy to --
Although I think, Lyndy, we were supposed to have walked to that event.
Oh, sorry.
I would agree with your description of the parking lot.
No, I was a little far away.
Very welcoming, the tall ceilings, the way everything is finished, it feels very comfortable, I think, and there's good elevators bringing you up to the retail levels.
Right. And the fact of the affordable housing, just a quick story, you know, I sub up at the school, and this one gal in the high school said, "We won the lottery." And I said, "Oh, good." She said, "We got one of the units over in the North Gate," and she was just absolutely flying high, you know, her mom and her brother and this gal. And she says, then she said, "Ah, they've got candy down in the lobby, too, that we can go get."
Some things actually worked, I guess. Any further reports? Okay, we'll move on to our minutes, approval of minutes. The April 7th minutes, we've had some comments on that from a, someone who was involved in the meeting. Let's see if I can find that. Has everyone had a chance to read the comments from Mr. Nicholson, and also the verbatim minutes and the draft minutes? This was for April 7th, 2014. Just a yes or no would be good.
Yes.
Yes.
We have read it.
Okay.
Have I had changes?
Well, there haven't been any changes because we haven't made any yet. So, does anyone want to make any changes, given the suggestions? Because I, my reading of it is that Ms. G. made a pretty good synopsis of what was said, and that although Mr. Nicholson suggested that I was agreeing with his points, in fact, I was saying I understood his points. So, I mean, according to the verbatim. So, I didn't see much, you know, much variation between the synopsis and what was actually said. Does anyone have any other comments on that?
You know, I guess I looked at the three, the verbatim, his comments, and the minutes, and I guess one of the statements he had made, the only one I really thought made, he said he did not advise that every issue raised by the Planning Commission should be addressed in any new subdivision proposal. And looking at the verbatim, I think he's correct. He didn't really, that statement doesn't completely sync with what he said verbatimly.
So, would you like to make a correction? I think that's line 291.
I think we could just remove that one sentence. It starts in the middle of 293, "He advised that every issue raised by the Planning Commission should be addressed in any new submission." I'd just remove that one sentence, because he did say stuff like that, but he didn't say that exactly, and that seemed to be one of his major issues. And I, looking at the verbatim, I can see how you could come to that summary, but I just think it's easy just to remove it.
The whole sentence?
Yeah, just remove the sentence. That would be my thought.
That would be your thought?
Yeah.
Are there any other comments or objections to Ms. Hocken, I mean, Ms. Teetz?
Whoever you are.
Yeah. Suggestion on this?
Okay. Want to do a motion?
Any more comment? No, wrong? Yes.
So, I say we move to approve the minutes of April 7th, 2014, with the one change, the removal of that one sentence at two, in the middle of two, line 293 through 294.
Now, second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of April 7th, 2014, as amended by Ms. Teetz, removal of, what did you say, 293?
Yeah, it's middle of 293 through 294, that one sentence.
And I think, I'll read the sentence, "He advised that every issue raised by the Planning Commission should be addressed in any new submission." Is that correct?
Correct.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The eyes have it. The minutes are approved as amended. We'll move on to the April 21st minutes. I have a couple of things, Ms. G., well, one thing. It's on the last page, starting on page 709, line 709, no, 708. I think what you mean there is pilot. Okay. And there are three instances of that, 708, 710, and 717. I think they're no longer calling it pilot, but they were calling it pilot at the time, so.
Yeah. Which was a horrible name for it. Ready for a motion?
Um, yes, because I, my other comment was clarified at our earlier meeting. I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. I move that we approve the minutes of Monday, April 21st, 2014.
As amended?
As amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved that we approve the minutes of April 21st, 2014, as amended by Ms. Hockenberry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstained, I wasn't here.
Oh, thank you. That's right, we missed you.
You missed.
Motion is adopted. Yeah, I'll show you in a minute. Before we call everybody back in, I'd like to note on our agenda for this week that there was a slight typo under old business. Resolution 1410 and resolution 1416 had something carried over from the previous meeting. And so, we, those resolutions are those, what would we call, descriptions. It says, "Hold public hearing and continue to May 15th." So, those, that should be, I mean, May 5th. So, those two sentences should be deleted from that particular description. It was just inadvertently carried over from the last meeting. So, the, I think Ms. G. has made corrected copies, and they are available to the public. Is that true? Thank you. Now, I have no other things to discuss, so I think maybe we should get --
I can give you an update.
Oh, the Planning Director's report, yes.
We do have a lot of things moving forward. Mr. Meeks mentioned the Parks and Rec Group is going to have their meeting on the 7th of May. Tomorrow evening on the 6th, I'm going to be at the Economic Development Authority Advisory Body, and we're going to be talking about the downtown small area plan. We're going through the Boards and Commissions' review. So, we also then need to figure out when is the best time for that to come back, I'm sorry, when is that the best time to come back to the Planning Commission for your review prior to it going to council? We'd like to get that done by July. So, that's an unscheduled item, we need to sort that out. And you all, I believe, have copies of the plan, but if we, we may want a work session on that, to talk about it in more detail with you. So, we'll work with the Chair to try to figure that out. But it is moving forward, which is good, and it was well-received by the city council in their advertising of it. Mobility for all modes, you were at the work session this evening, that's coming back to you for adoption, and recommendation to city council on Monday, May 19th. It's not only an important milestone, because that's, that'll be an official adoption of a replacement chapter for the transportation chapter. I know the Commissions work with CACT and with Paul Stoddard, our staff person, and Kirsten Muntz has been very helpful in getting that accomplished. Also, we're planning a session on 400 North Washington Street. This is the office building that's proposed at Washington and Columbia, and this is the joint work session. There also is a plan to have a joint work session on Park Broad and West. They were at the EDC tonight, wasn't able to be at that meeting, so don't know the outcome of that, but that's also moving forward. There are a couple of small items that will be headed your way, we believe. There's some change of hours proposed for the winter homeless shelter. This is something approved by the BZA, but the Planning Commission is, they need your recommendations and thoughts on expanding the months of the year in which that can be handled. I think presently, it starts late, and we need to start earlier so staff can prepare the facility in advance of residents taking, using it. Also, we had an enforcement case with U-Haul on West Broad Street. They were encroaching on the WOD parkland, and we've required them to go through a site plan process. That will also include some parking layouts and inclusion of a fire lane, because the problem with sites tended to be blocked by mass parking without clear passage to propane tanks or some other facilities. If you had a real emergency, you couldn't, fire couldn't get in there. So, that's another item. In the next chapter of the comp plan update, we're going to be focusing on Recreation and Parks, and so there's a, there are two dates there, a kickoff work session with Recs and Parks on June 4th, and then Planning Commission kickoff session on the 16th of June. We also would like to begin the fourth small area planning effort, and we will be focusing, it looks like, on the Broad Street corridor from Little Falls up to the WOD Trail. This is an area where we have a fair amount of activity. It's an important connecting piece of Broad Street, includes office buildings, also private religious and school properties such as St. James Church. Church, we have the development we're looking at tonight, is in that area. And so, it's an important, the Broad, Western Park project as well. So, it's an important area that is focus of some development, and updating that area, we think, is an important, important project to go forward with. So, if we can get a kickoff in June, early summer, we can then begin to work on it and hopefully keep on our schedule of keeping momentum going on these small area plans. It does appear that the whole schools process is going to be a longer, more complex effort with a variety of people participating. So, this is something, if we keep our Planning Commission efforts going on these small area plans, this is an important part of the city that needs attention. So, that's our intent, and if you have thoughts about that, whether that's a good idea or not, let us know. Tinnerhill Park, I think Fairfax County has done some final things that are letting that go forward. If you recall, you heard it as part of a 2232. There's a very limited amount of work that's actually going to happen. The city part, there's a sign, that's a by right sign, that's going to go up marking it as a park, and I think there's going to be part of a patio in the Fairfax portion, they're going to build a pavilion. So, it's moving forward, and Sydney Master's been doing a really great job moving it forward. We'll keep you posted on when there's, when they're going to have some kind of an event there. But it's been a long time coming, and the trailer has been removed, as you may have noticed if you've seen that site. There is a lot of undergrounding work that's being done as part of Tinnerhill Project, which we hope will be done soon. They're trying to get it done as quickly as possible to minimize the disruption of the community, but it will eventually result in some of those, all the poles on the project side being removed, as well as some that lead to Pearson Square and adjacent to Elevation Burger. So, as you've seen around, the projects are now underway at the Rushmark Site and Tinnerhill Site. There also is a lot of progress being made on the Good Fortune Grocery Store up at Eaton Center, that's under, the exterior's going on, they're redoing some electrical plans to get that going. We hope that gets done quickly and can open this year. So, those are some items. We had a busy month. You should have a copy of our April report. Our staff workday is letting us get these done in a much more timely way, so we're able to get them to you within a few days of the end of the month. So, that process is working for us and for staff. We did have a lot more phone calls and visitors than we had the previous month. So, at any rate, continues to be busy here in the city.
I also notice under all of these activities that you had two property maintenance inspections. Is that from the property maintenance ordinance that we --
Yes, those were, yeah, and we do have, we do have, we do have an active hoarding case that we're working on.
Are those commercial or residential?
I would have to check. There may have been one commercial and one residential, and I'd have to check on which ones they were.
I'm just curious as to how the residential are playing out. I think we all supported the commercial, but we thought that the residential might be a little dicey, so.
We've had, we've had some examples, there was, for example, a house that had a bad fire, and we worked to get that resolved, that's been removed, it had been vacant for a long time, become a blighting influence. There is now a new house going up there. We had a house that had an elderly resident with a swimming pool that was becoming a danger, was, you know.
Okay, so it's working so far.
We were able to work those through. So, there is a lot of individual work done with property owners. Sometimes there's special situations, but we work to try to resolve them. If we need to use the ticketing approach, we will use that if needed, but we first try to solve the problem. And the hoarding cases are a special case, we work with the Fire Marshal and the Human Services folks in Fairfax County, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Snyder? No? Okay.
One update?
Yes.
Okay.
You need a microphone, Mr. Bruce. It's best if you have one on the cord.
We had four different people taking notes, you know, comparing all the things that happened downstairs. So, we're almost done, and what Pat's doing now is writing everything down, so then they'll initial it and sign it, and bring it back to you, and then you'll have something to look at. I don't know whether we're going to run copies up there, or whatever. Are there any special recommendations while we have the opportunity? For example, do you want to take up the issue of, of --
Affordable housing?
Affordable housing and the rollover.
Yes.
The carryover, I mean. So, I mean, is that?
We'd like to, to, yes.
Is that unanimous, is it?
Well, we haven't discussed it here, but we would like to make a recommendation, I think.
Well, I mean, they're going to bring back something that we're supposed to vote on today, right?
Right. So, it'd be nice to know if it's unanimous.
Are the other Planning Commissioners agreement we should have the carryover?
I personally would like to see them have a carryover. Now, I don't know if everyone else feels that way. Mr. Rankin?
I think it would be great if they come up here and say no. I don't know that I would necessarily vote no, if that's the question, but I mean, I think it's worth.
Okay, well, we're just trying to decide if we want to recommend to them.
If I were negotiating, I'd still be pushing for it. And then, and then, while we're talking about things, I mean, the other thing is --
Wait till we finish this. Mr. John, do you have a preference on the carryover for the affordable house, affordable house, housing units in the, the carryover of the money? Okay. Lyndy? Okay. You are supporting that? Rob, do you?
I'm going to.
Okay. So, I think you could say that --
I think staff certainly supports the approach.
That the staff, the staff supports it, and we support the staff approach.
And there was one other item I wanted to mention.
The housing staff. Yeah, and also, Russ.
Russ?
Yeah.
I'm sitting in Russ's seat.
Andy wants to say something.
The other thing is, I finally got some clarification on the payment in addition to tax and all that stuff, and I talked to the city assessor, he's a very nice guy. But it makes me realize that that $18 million construction cost that they're using as the basis for the whole thing is, I don't know, it's a number they provided, it sounds like they haven't provided us with performas. I just wonder if there's not a more appropriate method under which either they do provide us a performas, or it's assessed after the construction is done on actual costs. It just seems like a, the whole, the whole process of this payment in addition to taxes has been an attempt to get a tax revenue amount similar to a different use, and it's a complicated thing, but it seems like every step of the way, there's some component, whether it was how it escalated, was sort of artificially based, now it seems like they have a decent model for that. But it still comes back to it being pegged to $18 million, and I have, I mean, I personally haven't seen anything that justifies that, or no one's really talked to it, so. It, so if it is actually a $20 million or $25 million construction, it's a drastic difference on the lifetime value of the project to the city.
Well, our economic --
Well, our economic development staff has been looking at that and they've not raised that number as being an issue. They've been looking at that whole issue very closely. And so I think we're pretty confident that that's a good number in terms of what the estimated building cost would be. One thing I wanted to mention, there was some discussion about retail downstairs.
Yes.
And one of the things that I did and sent to the manager and we sent on up was taking the B1 uses, which are service, retail and retail, and taking out all the service pieces. There is a pretty good, there's a very good list of retail, appropriate retail uses to be compatible with this. And so we've suggested to them that that list, which is in B1, minus the service uses, the retail uses be something. So you'll see that language, I think, coming for, coming back to you. And it would include art galleries.
Right.
And it would allow the city manager to opine on whether or not a particular use that wasn't listed there was retail. But the notion is retail uses, not service uses. Secondly, there was a clarification that Sidney Mester asked for, that we make clear that the venting for the restaurant is actually going through the roof. And they have committed that that's the case, but we want to add that language through the roof to the language.
I was going to suggest that as well. I think that's an important.
So those are a couple of things. We also talked about the idea of a 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM timeframe on the loading as a reasonable amount of time that would not be cut in too early in the morning or too late in the evening for the trash loading and unloading. Be a 12-hour period.
Okay. I'd also like to, to make sure that nothing in, in the arts retail space precludes any use, I mean, any retail sales by the whoever uses that space. Like if it's an art gallery and they want to sell boxes.
Right.
You know, like those cute little boxes that are shown in art space over there. They want, I think that that's really an important component and it would add more activity to that. So I want to make sure that nothing precludes any arts use of that from, any sales use in that art space.
I think that's an important, and we would, I think that's an important clarification, but it would be a retail use. And so selling the art or any other objects that are part of that gallery or space or studio space would be appropriate.
Or using it for fundraising purposes if they wanted, okay. Okay.
Also, you had in front of you the commercial, this PowerPoint, if anyone had any questions on that while we're waiting.
No, well, I.
Happy to talk to you about that as well.
I, I think maybe we could open the meeting to the public in case anyone wants to speak on this issue while we're waiting for the proffers to come up.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Do I have any slips? Ah, I see we have a duet. Joe Wetzel and Barbara Cram. Please give your name and address and you each have three minutes.
We don't need, we're late enough. St. Wetzel and Barb Cram, we're representing Falls Church Arts at.
Fort Tens.
South Maple. South Maple, trying to be entertaining, just to tell the planning commission that we are here in general support of the Kensington. It's inclusion of Falls Church Arts and we are to enter, tell the planning commission.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Wetzel, is that microphone on?
Yes, that microphone is on.
He's not speaking into it.
And that we are in negotiations with Ed and Harley on the particulars of a lease, but are 100% confident that we'll come out with something that will be very painful to them. I mean, will make Falls Church Arts and the city very happy.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this particular?
Madam Chairman, I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
This kept coming up in my mind as we were talking about Lee Street, I think it's North Lee.
North Lee, yes.
And I was wondering, given the, and I'm trying to put this delicate, given the fact that this population within Kensington is going to be using a lot of the ambulance services and the, you know, the.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, services. What are we doing to mitigate the, the noise that comes from, you know, such services being, going to the building regularly?
I think, I'm sorry. I think we've looked at how that would operate. I believe that they would probably be coming quietly. Pickup would take place inside the building and we've looked at the parking design so that there can be, there is room to circulate and pick up or service, provide service from inside the garage. It's a generously designed circular driveway arrangement. And so I, in many cases, I think they would be coming without sirens blaring, but we could double check that with, some of that's operational in terms of how they handle these kinds of situations.
Right. And these.
This isn't like a, like a vehicle crash or something at a major intersection or an active fire or something like that. You'd, you'd come on a call and.
To the hospital.
Right, okay.
I would think that, that we would not, it would not be a noisy.
Because I think it's, it's adjacent to a residential building, so.
Right.
That was one thought that occurred to me, if we could mitigate that kind of, at least when they get to that street, they could turn off the sirens before they go into Kensington.
I'm wondering if our noise ordinance might not address that. I, I haven't, I've seen ambulances come out of my, the area that I live in and I've never heard them until I see them going down the street. So I'm just wondering if, if, yeah.
I think typically they will not, there's much less reliance on making a siren noise unless they need it to warn traffic that's evident, who needs to know that they are coming.
Right.
So they might blip the, the noise and I've seen that recently where that was done with an ambulance where they needed to get through so there was a brief, a brief noise made to help traffic understand they need to get out of the way. But it looked like people were using a lot of discretion in terms of that, only as needed.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question about the commercial and retail looking ahead document. When is, you know, you've presented it kind of to the city council and to planning commission, but I think the huge, you know, very important group would be Economic Development Group, EDA, you know, to have part of this. And also, I've been very seriously thinking of, you know, talking with you and talking with the EDA folks to put, start looking at the legal things we can do to incentivize, getting businesses in here. And looking at things, a way to deal with taxes or B poll or, you know, for a certain amount of time, or to work on a program because we've, we've got the tech zone and that's, and then we've got the one program where if you're in an old building, you can get some help, you know, redesigning the face of that building. But I really think we need to have a more aggressive plan to incentivize, you know, getting businesses in here and to make us different.
I think one thing, one thing that is a key thing that can be of help and it's, it's something we can talk about a little bit in the downtown plan, is flexibility on parking, particularly older properties. Many older properties in the city don't meet the parking code as it's written. And flexibility, particularly in the older area where everybody's got their little bit of parking and they jealously guard it and they may tow their neighbor's customer. We need to provide, I think, flexibility, maybe create a parking district where now that we have some access possibly in the future to the, now and in the future, the Kaiser Garage, we encourage people to use a garage and allow some of these small balkanized parking areas to be filled in with good uses. Some of you are familiar with the Dogwood Tavern where they came to the city and wanted to provide some additional seating and build their roof deck. They were able to do that partially because we had some amount of public parking in the area nearby. We have some off Maple Avenue and some going up by the Frame Store. That's been, that's been a success in terms of giving them more customers, more space during certain, you know, in nice weather. And I think something similar may happen at Clarion Don's. And this is where the small homegrown businesses, I think, need, need more, need flexibility. The 400 Washington Street project, for example, there are, there is the Methodist Church nearby where parking for North Gate construction went on very, very efficiently. Being able to use those spaces in a cooperative way without necessarily a 30-year agreement, which is what the code says now, it makes sense because it, it makes use of spaces that otherwise might be used once or twice a week. And it provides possibly some income to groups that can use that income as a part of their program or to help pay their stormwater fee or other kinds of uses. So one of the things we heard tonight on Mobility for All Modes is, because remember, parking is not transportation, parking is storage. Parking doesn't, parking by itself doesn't get you to a place. It provides a place for a vehicle to sit. But, but thinking about, can we have the right number of spaces, use the ones we have the best, provide the right number, but not spend a lot of extra money on spaces that aren't needed or that are duplication. So more flexibility and, and looking at parking is important. And we are, we are looking to try to bring someone in to do some work on our parking ordinance. We need to, we need to do some inventory of our mixed-use projects and see how many of those spaces are in fact being used. If you go down below the spectrum, there often are a lot of vacant spaces down there. And, and yet it is well-used by people coming there to use the retail uses. But we need to be able to do some counts and see what the actual usage is and demand is of projects that have been approved so far. So I think that's an important area that's been on everybody's list.
I think that's some great ideas, but I think what I'm saying is to push for some other types of real incentives, you know, and because we are up at the upper level of the B poll and taxes and if there can be any, any way of getting, you know, maybe, you know, a couple of years of abatement on some things just to get commercial in here, offices and everything. So that's what I was more talking to.
Well, and to that point, one success that you've heard a little bit about, at some point they're going to have maybe a grand opening. The vacant office buildings on Nanondale Road, they were, they did use the commercial rehabilitation tax credit because those are older buildings. That was one of the reasons that they were able to bring them in, buy the properties and improve it.
Could you give us some information on that, that that was used and how it was used?
We can give you more information on that, but that, that company moved out of Arlington and they had.
I was not aware of that's what they.
Yeah, that was one of the, they used that economic development tool and that made it, helped them be able to purchase the property, spend a lot of money renovating. And now it's back in the tax rolls instead of being vacant building. So that was an example of one of those tools, in fact, did help a new business come to the city and I think they're happy to have been here, so.
Yeah, in my experience, the big challenge we have is we have, we have no high-quality office space in the city. And so if you're a business, you want to get high-quality office space, you need, we either need to build some office buildings or have some program that allows an affordable way to renovate the existing office space.
Those buildings were renovated extensively on the inside. And at some point, if you all would like a tour, we can probably arrange that. But they, they basically did an awful lot of work inside and.
Been there, it's quite nice. They put in a new elevator, they sold their old elevator, they're both quite nice.
So, you know, there are, there are some things that are helping, but I think it's an important topic maybe to talk with EDA in more detail about what are some incentives we can provide to help bring more business here.
Welcome back. Okay. Mr. Snyder, while we're waiting for this, I'd like to ask a question. What can be done about the proliferation of sandwich signs throughout the city? I've noticed everywhere I go that there are just an inordinate amount of sandwich signs of people who, of businesses seems to me to have, I don't know if, if they're out there because they, the businesses feel that they don't have adequate signage or what, but many of them are in terrible condition. They're very unattractive. They're in the right-of-way of people walking on the sidewalk. They, a lot of them, when you go to pull out of something, they impede your view. And I just wish that we could, when we first started allowing sandwich signs, it was because we thought that they would make the city more attractive, you know, in some way. But it's not working. And what, and I know that the AAB controls this, is do, do we have to petition the AAB to do something about it or what, what can we do?
Well, I believe we have, where they're in the right-of-way, we have, we have pulled many of them. We, the inspectors have gone around and yanked them if they're in the, in the wrong place. We hold them for a certain period and then people can treat them for a price. But it is a little bit of cat and mouse, if you will. We can look into it and have a further discussion. I think it's also something worth talking with the chamber about because I believe a lot of these small businesses feel that they need to engage with the walking public, what there is of it here in the city and let them know what's happening.
Massage? You know, quick massage?
Well, I'm thinking like the, the market on Broad and sometimes health restaurants who have specialty, special, specials written up.
I, I can understand one thing that, you know, would engage the public to enter the, but I, I don't think if you were walking down by the spectrum, you would suddenly decide to go in and get a massage. I just, I mean, those kind of things, I think, are not useful.
I think that also points out that's probably not a good use for primary retail street. You know, those are the, if you look at the piece we put together, that would not be on the list of things you could have on Broad or Washington. You really want to have retail restaurants and.
Right.
Activity. That's a service type of use that could be in another location.
Can I?
I do think some discussion with the chamber would be useful.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick procedural question?
Yes.
So we're going to vote on Kensington. And I understand that if we approve a package and then city council changes it, then it adds that six weeks because they got to come back here.
That's just the proffers.
The proffers. If for some reason we decided to, like if I fall asleep in the next five minutes and we decide to push this off to our next meeting, does that create a two-week delay or a six-week delay?
We'd have to get out the calendar. I mean, you have to hit the state mandated.
I guess what I'm saying is, does this serve as the second public meeting? It's been notified and stuff like that.
We strongly urge you to get it done tonight.
All right, yeah, I'm getting sleepy.
Do you, do you have anything that you'd like to speak to us about while we're waiting for?
Well, actually, I'd ask you, are there any questions that you have that you want to address to us or?
If they're non-proper questions, we could get them done.
Oh, right. If they're non-proper questions, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. Melissa, thank you.
I've got a non-proper question.
Yes. Yes, go ahead, yes.
Something I think we need to have in our development package is rodent, vermin control when you're taking down a building and make sure that nothing, you know, to help, keep things from going to the neighborhoods, you know, rats and stuff like that. So are you going to be?
Absolutely.
Exterminating? But, but, you know, I've asked that quite often, but I think we need to have that in as a point of, you know, an absolute.
I think that's a good idea and, and would certainly fit in when, when we approve something like this and with our standard expectations.
Or development.
That are no longer proper, they're just expectations such as, you know, we know everybody's going to now include the.
A second condition of site plan where you would write something and say.
Or demolition.
Priority demolition of the building.
Yes.
Developers shall take steps.
Absolutely.
To come up with a rat and rodent abatement plan shall be implemented prior to the crazy weather. of the building.
Right. Absolutely. And I think that's something that should be standard. So, I don't have to, so I don't have to remember it.
That can relate to the site plan because it's really looking at the activity of.
But it's priority demolition, absolutely. Thank you.
And it's an important thing because it, that can happen where demolition of buildings disturbs a hidden man.
The key cards aren't working anymore.
It's all right.
There will be no minutes of this meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Novak, I have a.
Yes.
Quick discussion that we had while you were in the back. And the discussion had to do with, given the fact that you begin quite a few EMT vehicles coming to your facility because of the high use, we're wondering about, you know, noise and how to abate the noise because you have an adjacent property that's a residential property. So, that's something that you might consider during your operation of that facility.
Sure. And, and just to clarify, our staff acts as the first responders. So, for our residents, you know, if they were living in their own homes and fell or something happened, you know, they would be calling 911 or that would occur. By being in our facility, which is staffed 24 hours a day, the medically-trained staff act as the first responders. And when there are, I mean, there will be occasionally an emergency situation in which, you know, you have to dial 911. But, the first responder is communicating with the fire department as to what the nature of the emergency is. And typically, you know, there's, there's a lot of mitigation in terms of use of sirens because they're coming to, you know, a known facility. So, that can be controlled quite a bit.
Mr. Novak, we mentioned in response that that pickup would take place inside.
Yes, and, and.
Garage, contained garage area.
Correct. The garage is designed to accommodate, I forgot the term of art, but it's the super-duper ambulance EMT vehicle. So, we have sufficient height clearance, 12 feet, that the fire marshal wanted for that. And, that vehicle, because of the circular pattern of our interior parking, that vehicle can pull up right to the resident lobby area and be parked there and still allow other cars to pass through. It won't block the circulation of the garage.
So, I, I had a question.
Oh, sorry, Andy.
And Jim addressed a little bit before you guys were here, but the, you know, me and the financial aspects of it, I don't know if this counts as a proffer because I don't think this is being changed. But, I actually, I really appreciate the new model where we go off the 10, the properties in the bucket, or basket, sorry. Bucket would be better, but okay. I think that's cool. That kind of gets over my big thing about how do we better track the appreciation, which of course leads me back to the beginning, which is that $18 million construction costs. And I'm just curious if, you know, how that number is determined and if there's any flexibility if construction cost ends up being $20 million or $25 million, or how, where that number came from and how confident we could be that that's an appropriate number.
We're pretty confident that we, we're too generous with it. Because in terms, in terms of the, in terms of what is typically counted in terms of construction costs, for example, we have a lot of expensive, and that's what we'll be paying personal property tax on, fixtures and equipment, things like that. But in terms of the hard costs, I mean, there wasn't a tremendous amount of science in this. I mean, we, if you take the assessor's value of the land at $60 a square foot, which is what all the B-1 zone land is, that's roughly $2 million. $16 million works out to $200 a square foot, which, again, when you look at tax analysts' building, it's $120 or $130 a square foot for 100% commercial building. You know, we think that, you know, in terms of using AIA standards and typical construction cost indexes that, for example, I checked in Montgomery County, they would use $145 a square foot for an assisted living facility. So, I think that, you know, the, the intent was that we thought that was a reasonable number as to what the property would be assessed at based upon construction costs. You know, we have since learned that, you know, for whatever reason, that's not typically what the assessor in Falls Church assesses construction at. If you look at what Hilton Garden Inn is being assessed at, it's a lower number than our $18 million would apply.
Well, and that, that sounds good. But, I mean, is there, I mean, under, under, I mean, would, would, they talk about this pro forma and whether or not they've got the pro forma and the non-pro forma, and some people seem surprised by that. I don't know if that's unusual. I mean, I believe what you're saying, but is there any reason not to just, I'm also partially killing time here, but is there any reason not to just, to just have the agreement go, I mean, especially if it might be to your benefit, go off of actual construction costs, or?
Well, you know, I think we can certainly, we can certainly look at that. But again, it seemed what the city was looking for in our discussions with Wyatt was, you know, a healthy number that had certainty to it. And I think that, you know, when we got into some discussions about what that number might actually be, you know, if that number comes back at 14 or 15 million, are we now going to have to come back for reapproval?
Well, and if, if it turns out to be 20 million, I mean, I'm guessing your banker will be upset in addition to us. I mean, I was saying like, okay, yeah, so that's true. If it came back at 14, then the number's worse. But, if it came back at 20, we may be thinking like, oh, well, I don't know why we just went with that 18 number. I mean, I guess we'll never know when it'll come back as. We won't, you'll know because you'll build it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tough call. You know, it's, it's, you know, we're trading off certainty for, you know, some variability. And, again, a little bit of our concern was, you know, so much of the economic analysis of the project was based on the 18 million, that even though we think that, you know, we can make a justification for probably a lower number, is that going to be a problem with the city? So, that's where, you know, and we discussed that with Wyatt, and he, I don't want to speak for him, but our sense was that.
He's right there.
Let's just stick with it.
That's okay.
Wyatt? Wyatt, do you want to speak?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, what's the issue?
The question is, you know, the, the certainty of using the 18 million versus the, you know, versus using actual construction costs, which could be lesser or more than that. And as I said, you know, we feel that some of the data that we've gotten in terms of how properties are assessed on a per-square-foot basis, that $200 a square foot actually exceeds anything that is comparable in the city.
Yeah, I think that's, I think the city is, is well-protected with the, with the provision as written. And, one thing that I think is a point, though, is that Section C does call for if the assessed value times tax rate is higher than the supplemental payments, then that's what holds. And so, the, the city's protected on that side as well. So, I do appreciate Mr. Novak's and Mr. Cook's work on the escalator. I think that was one of the, a key, a key thing for the city, and I appreciate your, your approach to it.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, I, I also appreciate that. I think it's a much better model than the way it is now.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I wanted to give you a heads-up. We've made copies. We had to add one change to a paragraph after we made copies. I can hand these out to you. When the, when the other copies come, it'll be, I can note for you what the change is.
That would be terrific.
So, we can get you all started.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could point out to you, the only change that we have is, in addition to the, to the changes you see on this document that I've handed out, is to paragraph three. So, when those new copies come, I'll hand those out also.
Okay.
I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
I think we'd like to go, go through it right now, and, and then when the other document comes through, we can.
Okay.
Approve that. So, the first, notice the first change is on page two, under criteria.
That's correct.
Seems pretty reasonable.
We, we tried to. We tried to follow the suggestions made downstairs by council, and we thought it was clear, clearer to say that the basket will contain the 10 highest properties each year, excluding the following. And then, to highlight that, we put in the word "particular" in paragraph B. And the word "the" wasn't mentioned downstairs, but it was just obviously missing, so we added it.
Okay.
And I should note that all the changes on these, on these documents, or in this document, have been signed and each, each change has been initialed by the owner.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to the page four, changes to the arts retail space.
Now, that, that particular paragraph, we don't have as exactly what was discussed downstairs. The, the owner was, went through, and there were certain types of retail outlets that they didn't want to, they didn't want to use as a possibility. So, they limited it to basically, in addition to the restaurant, food, beverage, bakery, et cetera, and the arts use to clothing stores, gift shops, florists, music stores, and I think that's it.
Okay.
So, this is a reduced version of B1 retail use.
Right.
So, it's more selective.
And I think that's it for that page.
Then, on page six, there's something removed.
Yes, page six was the, the point that I brought up downstairs, to take out the ambiguity contained in the two sentences. So, now, any employee that is, is user, or any person employed on the subject property will not be allowed to park on the streets. And it's not especially Park or North Lee, but any street. And there's no time limit.
So, these poor employees can't park anywhere in the city, or they, they have to leave town after their shift is over?
Well, if they're not there for employment, they, they can park anywhere they want. But, when, when they're employed on the property during those hours, they have to park on the property.
Okay.
We were just thinking about that. After they were done working, we were like, we want them to stay and eat something if they want to. But, but it does say during their shift, so I guess that makes it clear.
They're welcome to park at Mad Fox. There you go.
If they're willing to eat the food right now.
I was feeling bad for the employees. Okay, so, I think, I think we're all in agreement with that. Then we move on to the.
Paragraph 12.
Yeah, paragraph 12.
That, we got some assistance from Mr. Collins, the Director of Public Works, and those hours pretty much mimic the, the hours of the, of the code for trash trucks. And I, I think there may be a slight difference, but basically, they, they can't have trash trucks or truck deliveries between 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays.
Good. That sounds good. Is that an acceptable? Okay, we'll move on to page seven.
That's paragraph 17.
And crosswalk and bump out?
Correct.
And it looks as though you're including all four crosswalks. I think that's commendable and appreciated. And so, you have one more change?
The, and I can describe the change, and I'll bring the copies to you as soon as Mr. Bruce gets here. That was the, the agreement to provide, and I'm not sure I'll get the exact language, but to provide conduits for electrical vehicle charging and also to provide solar, what was, what was the word, Mr. Novak?
Conduit.
Solar, solar vehicles, or solar panels? Solar panels?
Or solar panels.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's going to be.
We'll get the exact language.
Is that going to be added to Section 3, the lead criteria?
Right at the end.
As an add-on?
Right at the end. And, and it pretty much is what was discussed downstairs, I believe. You must be having the same copying difficulties that I had.
Well, we're going to, we're going to request a new copier for the planning department, All right. Are there any comments, questions by the planning commission to the applicants, or to staff, or to Mr. Taves?
I would just say, I think the one issue left that we had discussed earlier was in the affordable units section. And it's the fact that the accounting subsidy doesn't carry over. So, we just need to bring it up because we did get a memo from Nancy Vincent about that, that she thought it would really be a good thing if it could carry over since it's not an exact amount, as she pointed out. So, is, is there any ability to change that? I mean, it's not a sticking point for me, but I really think we should bring it up.
Well, and let me address that. You know, I appreciate Nancy's concern, but I want to put this in perspective. $93,600 is a very, very generous amount. When you compare it to Rushmark, when you compare it to Lincoln Properties, at $1,300 a unit, no, and the calculation was based off of $1,300 a month, that's essentially giving away the rent for free and providing services. And as we all know, one of the challenges with assisted living is 75% to 80% of the monthly fees.
Thank you.
75% to 80% of the monthly fees is going towards the services. A fairly small percentage is going towards the housing. So, in, in, in allowing the flexibility for staff to determine how to apply, as opposed to $1,300 a month, as to how to apply that $93,600, that we felt was, you know, a very significant commitment on our part. The challenge of carrying this over and having it build up creates an uncertainty from an accounting standpoint, from a tax standpoint, from a lot of other ways. I mean, would we be willing to make it carry over if we were starting at $50,000? You know, perhaps. But, we, we tried to put our best foot forward in terms of the amount. And, you know, we, we think that, you know, staff will hopefully be able to utilize most of that in any given year, and, and that's really the best we can do.
I think that's reasonable, and I, I thought the amount was pretty large when I saw it.
And maybe we'll give the staff incentive to really use it.
And just to put this in perspective, $93,600 in the, in the terms, and Mr. Rankin will understand this, and if you capitalize that, you know, we're talking about a 1.3 to 1.5 million dollar commitment on a project that's only an $18 million project.
Well, I think more than Mr. Rankin would understand that.
It's a big number. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to say. I didn't mean to say.
I understand, I understand.
I felt like we just needed to have that public discussion since it had come up downstairs and you didn't get a chance to reply to it. And, I wondered about that. I thought of that, is it, if, you know, if you have a small amount every year carrying over, at some point it could become a large amount.
Yeah, and that would.
And they don't, we really don't know how much use, you know, there may be more use one year than another, but you don't really know. And, and so, I, I totally understand. But I think you need to say it publicly, and you perhaps are going to have to speak about it to council.
We will.
For their vote as well.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
So, we've gotten the new copies with the, with the second change. Electrical conduits for electrical vehicles and roof-mounted solar panels. Any questions? Any questions? Okay. Are we ready for a?
Oh, boy.
Are we ready to move forward?
Yes.
What? Yes, we.
I think I have it.
Can we add ventilation?
Yes. Yeah, it was.
It's not in here, but they said it's planned.
I think I saw it in the original.
Yeah, the.
Yeah.
After fireproof lining.
Yeah, that's, that's ventilation in the.
Oh, that's, yes, that's correct. I'm sorry, we missed one. If I can, yeah, I apologize. We just had way too much to do here. Let me make that change and I'll read it to you.
Oh, so, yeah, the bottom of page three.
It is, but.
Hasn't been changed to through the roof.
Oh, I see. Okay. The intent is that this would go, the intent is this would, as they have agreed to, go through the roof as opposed to out the side or?
Where people are walking, where sitting.
Also gives more flexibility in case you have to use change.
Right.
Okay.
That's a simple change.
So, that would say through the roof after fireproof lining, I believe. Through the roof after fireproof lining for casual food service use.
We discussed it, but they made a fairly valid, but yes.
Yes, we're ready for a motion.
They made a valid financial.
Make sure you say with the amended.
I didn't have a seat.
With the amended, or no.
I, well, you didn't ask me.
Did I, Andy, did I ask you to do this?
Motion.
The motions. Okay. Well, I'm asking Melissa then.
Madam Chair.
I mean, unless you want to. Yes?
I wanted to tell you that the owner has signed another, another change to the original. This is on page three, paragraph 5A, double I.
Right.
It will now read as follows, or it does now read as follows, and I'll hand the original to the clerk after, after I finish addressing the commission. It reads as follows, "At least 900 square feet of an AN outdoor seating area, comma, subject to final site plan approval by the planning commission." And then in paragraph triple I, it will say, "The kitchen shall be," it says, "The kitchen shall be fully ventilated with fireproof lining to the roof for casual food service uses." And I'll now hand that original to the clerk.
Fine. Thank you very much.
So, you want me to do a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
But you want to make sure you include the amended.
With the amended with the additions to.
Yes.
Here.
Okay. Additions or changes?
Did you write that, changes?
Changes or additions.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. "I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve TR 14-10 as amended with the changes in addition to the proffers and TO 14-16."
Is there any further discussion, Mr. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I appreciate, you know, your patience and the hard work you've done on this to bring this to fruition and satisfy everybody on this project. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time, too.
Glad we were able to wrap it up tonight.
Anymore? Okay. Ms. G? It's been moved and seconded that the planning commission recommend to city council approve TR 14-10 with changes and amendments to the proffers and TO 14-16. Ms. G., would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Please step up to the microphone and call the roll.
You don't have to leave it. Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teeds?
Yes.
Mr. Jean?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Thank you very much. It's been a long and tedious process, but I think we've come up with a good product. And I wish you good luck in your construction and business.
Can I get a bed and like?
Thank you very much. I have another PowerPoint presentation if you'd like to see.
I think we have that PowerPoint memorized.
Maybe the audience would like to see it. Okay. I think we've done all our housekeeping business as well, so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second it.
Motion, I mean, the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.